I would now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2017. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Westler.
Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. And where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. And where there is darkness, light. And when there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant I may not so much seek to be consoled as to be consoled. To be loved as to love, for it is in the giving that we receive. It's not in, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. If all Counselors will select the green button to indicate your attendance. Mr. Vice President. There are twenty-three members present. Counselor Johnson and Counselor Ray asked to be excused this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. We're very fortunate tonight to have an actual trifecta with us. We have three former deputy mayors of the city of Indianapolis. I'd like to introduce our friends, Mr. John Ryan, John Kraus, and Dave Frick, if you'd please stand.
Counselor Coats.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to recognize local 416 President Hank Harris.
Counselor Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to welcome to the chamber our friend and colleague, the senior pastor of the Mount Olive Baptist Church, Dr. Carl Z. Liggins is here. We're glad to have him here, along with Sister Rosalyn West. We welcome them and the other members of the Mount Olive Church here tonight.
Counselor Oliver.
Yeah, thank you, Madam-
Counselor Osalee.
Thank you, Madam President. With us this evening is Mr. Andrew Etsede, who is the president of NIDO, which is the Nigerians in Diaspora Organization, here on behalf of the, of NIDO for the special resolution this evening. Mr. Etsede.
Counselor Fanny.
Thank you, Madam President. With us this evening is the wife of former late great Mayor, Mr. Mayor Hudnut, Beverly Hudnut. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, June 5th at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Respectfully, Maggie A. Lewis, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I cause to be published in the court and commercial record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, May 19, 2017, a copy of a notice of adoption of special ordinance number 1, 2017, proposal number 94, 2017, reestablishing the cumulative firefighting building and equipment fund and levying a tax on all taxable property within the taxing district. Respectfully, Natrina DeBeau, clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Natrina DeBeau, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number 11, general ordinance numbers 18 through 21, special ordinance numbers 1 and 2, general resolution numbers 6 and 7, and special resolution numbers 21 through 27. Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Madam President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is the approval of the journals from May 8, 2017. Do I have consent? Will now proceed the presentations of petitions, memorial special resolutions, and council resolutions. Proposal number 172, introduced by Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. City County Council's special resolution number 282017 is special resolution honoring former Indianapolis Mayor William H. Hudnut III. Whereas, William H. Hudnut III, affectionately known as Bill, was born on October 17, 1932 in Cincinnati, Ohio. He attended the Darrell School in New Lebanon, New York, and graduated from Princeton University in 1954. Bill earned his master's degree in theology from the Union Theological Seminary in New York and was ordained as a clergyman in 1957. And whereas Hudnut was an ordained minister in the Presbyterian Church and was the senior pastor of Second Prez Church in Indianapolis from 1964 to 1972, he led the congregation with a moderate but active stance through the social issues of the 1960s, including the Vietnam War and race relations. And, who would like to join me? Whereas, in the 1972 Republican primary for Indiana's 11th congressional district, Hudnut defeated future Congressman Dan Burton. After winning the general election against four-term Congressman Andrew Jacobs Jr., he served only one term in the 93rd United States Congress. While in Congress, he sponsored seventeen bills that became law, but lost his reelection bid to Jacobs. And?
How did you get the part where he lost to, never mind. Step away, thank you. Counselor?
Whereas Hudnut became Mayor of Indianapolis in 1976, taking over from Richard Luger. His goal was to change the city from Indy-no-place to Indy-showplace. His mayorship was defined by economic development in downtown Indianapolis, business, construction, and sports. And?
Whereas Hudnut's policies were entrepreneurial, and he hoped to attract economic development by taking risks with raising taxes and issuing bonds. He aimed for job growth, a widened tax base, and law and order. And whereas?
Whereas, over the sixteen years of his term, more than thirty major building projects took place downtown, including renovations and expansions to Monument Circle, Indianapolis Union Station, the Indiana University School of Medicine, and the Indiana Convention Center. Many office buildings were constructed, and companies such as Eli Lilly and American United Life committed to staying in Indianapolis. And whereas?
Indianapolis became known as the amateur sports capital of the world, due in part to Hudnut's efforts at the market, at marketing the city. While Mayor of Indianapolis held the 1987 Pan-American Games and in 1982, the National Sports Festival, Hudnut formed the Indiana Sports Corporation, which directed sporting projects such as the Indianapolis Tennis Center, the Mayor Major Taylor Veldrum, and the IUPUI Nautatorium. And whereas?
In 1980, Hudnut formed a committee on building a new stadium to attract a National Football League team. With a newly-built Huger Dome and other incentives, he secretly negotiated with then-Colts owner Robert Ursay to bring the Colts to Indianapolis from Baltimore. On March 29, 1984, he organized the team's middle-of-the-night departure to Indianapolis with Mayflower moving vans. And he called it one of the greatest days in the history of the city. And whereas?
Whereas, despite sixteen years on the 25th floor, the City County Council Building doing the people's work, Mayor Hudnut never lost his common touch. He was a serious man who knew all, who always knew how to have a little fun. And whereas?
And whereas, former Mayor William H. Hudnut III departed this life on Sunday, December 18, 2016, at the age of eighty-four after battling numerous health problems. His upbeat personality and his genuine love for people will be missed. Hudnut leaves to cherish his memory behind his wife Beverly and their four children. He was preceded in death by two sons and a daughter, and now therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly honors the life and legacy of William H. Hudnut III for his many years of service as Mayor of Indianapolis. Section 2, the council extends its condolences, appreciation, and prayers to the family and friends of William H. Hudnut III. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, and he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 3634414. This special resolution was sponsored by Counselor McQuillan and practically every Counselor in the room, passed by the City County Council this 5th day of June, 2017. And Madam President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to point out that in about 1983, when I was an eighteen-year-old high school student at Perry Meridian on the South Side, I first met Mayor Hudnut when he came to a festival we were having. Was so impressed and excited that that began my, was one of the great things that began my path towards public service, and is quite an honor today to be here with his wife and friends and to honor him in this way. So, Madam President, with your permission, I would like to have Mrs. Hudnut say a couple words. Thank you.
Madam President, Minority Leader McQuillan, and members of the Indianapolis City County Council, thank you very much for passing this resolution in honor of my husband, Bill, to honor his sixteen years' service as the city's mayor. Bill used to love to tell the story when he was giving speeches about how he had to work with twenty-nine members of the City County Council, and that always made people laugh. And then he said that when the Pope came to town, he asked if the Pope would make all of the city council members Cardinals, so he would only have to kiss their rings. He always loved to laugh. The reality is that Mayor Bill had great respect for the role of the city council, City County Council, working as a partner with the mayor's office and the city departments in always a bipartisan manner. And not only to deliver city services, but to also lift the aspirations of this community to make it the great place it is today to live and work and raise a family. I'm honored to be joined here today by former deputy mayors Dave Frick, John Kraus, John Ryan, former city employees Lisa Dietrich and Karen Arland, friends Sharon Ryan and Andy Dietrich. And on behalf of my late husband, on behalf of the entire Hudnut family, and the whole Hudnut team, thank you very much for passing this resolution. Thank you.
Great job, Counselors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 152, introduced by Counselors Lewis, Osalee, Oliver Feaster-Evans, Coats, Westler, Scales, McHenry, Johnson, Clay, and Maury.
Mr. Recking?
So you want to make a motion to move it to the next council meeting?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to postpone this to our next council meeting.
Motion been properly moved and seconded to move proposal number 152 to the next council meeting. Do I have consent? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is proposal number 153, introduced by Counselors Kreider, Corday, McHenry, and McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, we just celebrated Memorial Day last week honoring those who gave their lives in service to this country so that we could have the freedoms that we have today. And some of you might know, in this city, we have a very unique court for our veterans. One of the first of its kind in the state, I believe, that strives to implement an early intervention model. And to date, that court has had a tremendous impact, helping to reintegrate veterans charged with offenses so that they can become productive members of our community again. Tonight, we have a special resolution for one of those individuals who's been a key part of that success. And I will read that now. Resolution number 30, special resolution recognizing Gordon Smith for his dedicated service to our country, our veterans, and the Indianapolis Veterans Court. Whereas Gordon Smith has a long and distinguished history of committed service, and whereas he initially served as a combat medic with the Indiana National Guard until he was commissioned in 1985 in the field artillery in the United States Army. And?
And whereas, he served our country during Desert Storm and later rejoined the National Guard, where he was deployed to Iraq from 2005 to 2006, and tasked to the United States Department of State to work as an operation facilitator to assist in the construction of Iraqi medical clinics. And whereas, in 2006, he was honorably discharged from active duty with the rank of Staff Sergeant, having numerous decorations and awards. And whereas, from 2009 to 2014, he was employed by Computer Science Corporation as the Medical Simulation Training Center Operations Director for the Middle East Operations and assisted in training U.S. and international coalition forces in the war on terrorism. And?
Whereas, he has been involved in a number of veterans organizations and worked diligently for the protection of our nation's veterans. And whereas, he currently serves as the mentor coordinator for the Indianapolis Veterans Court, where he is responsible for coordinating and implementing the mentoring program for our veterans, and is an integral part of the unique team that has, that is successfully rentagating our veterans who have been charged with crimes so that they can become productive members of our community. Now therefore?
Be it resolved. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes Gordon Smith for his dedicated service to our country, our veterans, and the Indianapolis Veterans Court. Section 2, the council heartily extends its gratitude and appreciation to Gordon Smith. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code, section 36-3-4-14. And Madam President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Madam President. With your permission, I'd like to invite Judge David Serto from the Veterans Court to say a few words. Thank you. Your Honor, your honor.
Madam President, Counselor McQuillan, members of the council, I'm very grateful to be here with you tonight to celebrate the service of Gordon Smith, whether it was in the Green Zone in Iraq, or in the mountains of Afghanistan, or in his bunker in the City County Building basement. Gordon Smith has served our community and our country. And I, on behalf of all the people who didn't have to serve, express our gratitude to him, Counselor Westler, the other members of this body, especially our veterans among us. I'm very grateful to work with a man like Gordon, who's uncomfortable being here tonight to be thanked by all of us. First, because he's wearing pants. Second, because he came back when so many others didn't. And we're very grateful for the sacrifices of everyone who left to serve us and came back, whole or in part. And on behalf of our community, on behalf of the Indianapolis Veterans Court, on behalf of my friends and my family, I want to thank Gordon Smith for his service and his example to all of us. Thank you for your hospitality.
Gordon, did you want to say a few words?
Madam President, and the members of the city council, I appreciate this very much. I am very honored and very humbled today. I, as Judge Serto said, I'm not one that likes to come out and get a lot of accolades of awards from what I've accomplished. I figure that I'm doing my job every day, and that's the most important thing. There's one other thing that I must mention is today is the 11th anniversary of a gentleman that died in Iraq with me, a good friend of mine, Richard Blakely. I want to remember him, but not only him, but those others who have served before us. We all gave some, but there were some that gave all, and I want us to all remember that. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 154, introduced by Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, fellow counsel. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, it's not, never have I witnessed or read what's about to happen here this evening, what has been going on in the city of Indianapolis, in Indigo. What we have here is an achievement and accomplishment that's been recognized the country over. And I begin by doing a resolution that I know this council will adopt. But first, we're going to tell a little bit about the recipient, Mr. Sam Garrison, who is recipient of what he has did, of what he has accomplished, as a benchmark that we will use in the future. Those that drive for Indigo, any other transportation services, that one day they will be receiving an award called the Sam Garrison Award. And the reason why I would be an advocate of that, I'll begin by reading this resolution. Madam Chair, the council, the city of Indianapolis, a special resolution recognizing Sam Garrison for fifty years as a professional coach operator for Indigo. Whereas, Sam Garrison was born in Elton, Tennessee, on October 22, 1933. He attended Bridgeport High School in Plaski, Tennessee. And after high school, Sam farmed before working at High Grade Packing House for fourteen years. And whereas?
On May 29, 1967, Sam started as a professional coach operator at Indigo, formerly known as Metro, and now holds the place of number one in seniority. And whereas, Sam has been the recipient of numerous awards, including the 1 Million Miles of Safe Driving Award, a two-time General Manager Award, and the Chairman's Award for Outstanding Performance. And?
Whereas, Mr. Garrison is admired by all coworkers and sets an example of customer service, commitment to the job, passion for safety, for safely transporting customers, and the importance of Indigo to the community. And?
Whereas, Mr. Garrison's dedication for the concern of passengers has not gone unknown. Many passengers have found it a delight to watch him cordially greet the passengers as they enter and exit the bus. Many have stated that it was wonderful to know that Indigo employs individuals of Mr. Garrison's character who are willing to be of service. Now therefore, be it resolved.
Be resolved by the City County Council of the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes the fifty years of dedicated service given by Mr. Sam Garrison as a professional coach operator. Section 2, on behalf of the citizens of Indianapolis, the council extends its appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Garrison, and encourages him to remain active, participant in the life of this community. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance and accomplishment with IC 36-3414. This specialist resolution was sponsored by myself, Counselor Oliver, and a host of other counselors, was passed by the City County Council, hopefully with the motion that I put forth, Madam Chair, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is anyone here from Indigo before we?
Yes, sir.
And before the VP comes up, I just want to say, there's a video that Indigo did on Mr. Garrison. If you haven't watched it, watch the video. It is a beautiful video.
We're going to hear from one of the deputy directors of Indigo, Mr. Roscoe Brown. Mr. Roscoe, please, give us some remarks.
Thank you. Roscoe Brown, Chief Operating Officer and Vice President of Operations for Indigo, and on behalf of our Board of Directors, and Mr. Michael A. Terry, who is our president and CEO, who could not be here tonight, and all of the 500-plus employees and team members of the Indigo organization, as well as the millions of writers that have had an opportunity to experience Mr. Garrison over the years, we just want to say, thank you for your service. You are truly a trailblazer. You have done fifty years of service, and I've tried to talk him into doing another fifty. But he's, he's, he's done for now, so, but we certainly appreciate your service, Mr. Garrison. I've always had the utmost respect for you. I've said it before, if I could put you on a copier machine and press a hundred, or until the paper ran out, we do that. We truly, we truly will miss you. Big shoes to fill. You've set the standard for all of our employees, not only professional coach operators, but for the organization as a whole, and myself included, and we thank you for your service.
We're not done yet. We're going to hear from Pastor Liggins, pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church. Mr. Garrison is a deacon at the church, and I'm sure his pastor is waiting to make some comments about Mr. Garrison. Pastor Liggins, please.
Thank you so very much, Counselor Oliver, and to Madam President, to the city council. We are grateful today to be here to stand, to honor such a great man. Oftentimes, we try to figure, how do we recognize an achievement that has never been achieved? Or how do we honor an accomplishment that has never been honored? Well, the Bible says to give honor to whom honor is due. And that's why we're here today, because we want to honor this great man who is epitomizes the greatness of this city. And for fifty years driving Indigo buses, and not only just driving Indigo buses, but to have driven a million miles without an accident. And some of us, our insurance rate goes up because we, we can't drive several years without one. And so we just thank God for him and his accomplishment and what he means, not only to his family and his church, but the city of Indianapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Liggins. And we're not going to take one more second without recognizing the person that fixed his lunch bucket for over fifty years, preparing him for the day of work. And I'm sure he'd thank you. We all appreciate you, Sister Garrison. And thank you so much for your, being an organist at our church. We appreciate that very much. I just want everyone to know that. But let me say this, before we hear about the recipient. In Elton, Tennessee, most of us in high school- At Elton, Tennessee, most of us in high school, they say, well, what do you want to be when you grow up? What do you want to be? What do you want to do? I don't know if you said, if you told those seniors that I want to be a bus driver for 50 years, over a million miles, accident-free. Did you make that prediction 50 years ago?
No, I didn't.
Well, then, the mic is yours, then. We want to hear from Mr. Sam Garrison.
To councilmen and all of my family and friends, you know, it's been a great experience for me down through the years, but I learned at a young age to trust in the Lord.
Yes, sir.
And the first scripture I learned in the Bible, Sister and I, she don't recognize it, but I did, it says, "A good name is better to be chosen than great richness. I'd rather have a good name than to have all the money of silver gone." What this company have did for me means more to me than being rich. I can't thank you, councilmen, enough for the night, for having and honoring me, but I just want to say, I fought a good fight, and I've kept the faith, and I've run the core, and I thank y'all very much.
Deacon Leroy Thrasher, will you close this out, please, with some remarks? And then we'll be done, Madam Chair. Deacon Thrasher.
There's really not a whole lot left for me to say. Deacon Garrison has been a role model to me. I love this man from the bottom of my heart, and he knows that. Years ago, oh, it's been several years ago, when I first came a deacon, this was my role model right here, and I love him, and as he always says, there's nothing he can do about it. He has a record for another Metro driver to break. He's going to make somebody history if they can break his record. So that's it for me, because word speaks itself. 50 years, there's nothing else can be said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 155, introduced by Counselor McHenry.
It's always an honor to recognize the youth in our city that do above and beyond and do some spectacular things, and it's always a real pleasure to recognize an Eagle Scout because I know how hard they have had to work. But I want you to listen as I read some of the other accomplishments of Conrad Burston. This is a special resolution recognizing Conrad Burston, Eagle Scout. Whereas Conrad Burston is a senior at Cardinal Ritter High School, where he has participated in several technology-related clubs and academic classes, and whereas Conrad has held numerous leadership positions within his St. Maliki Scout Troop 397, to include three terms as senior patrol leader, and several terms as patrol leader, as well as other troop leadership positions, including historian. And whereas, within the Boy Scouts, Conrad has been involved with their National Youth Leadership Training Program, one year as an attendee and two additional years providing leadership skills training as a NYLT camp counselor to new scouts. And whereas Conrad also earned the Order of the Arrow, which is an honor given to those scouts who best exemplify the scout oath and law in their daily lives. And whereas Conrad has been accepted to Purdue University for the 2017 Fall Semester and Polytechnic Institute, majoring in Engineering Technology Teaching Education. His goal upon completion of his college degree is to teach in the STEM area in either high school or at the college level. Whereas Conrad's Eagle Project was landscaping with the Indiana State Police Museum on the east side of Indianapolis, where 60 plants of four different types of shrubbery were planted. This project honored the organization's historical site and its members, and whereas the most interesting, challenging, and rewarding part of Conrad's journey to Eagle Scout was maintaining the determination to keep moving forward in spite of other pressures and demands of his time. Conrad's favorite song is "Goodbye to Hollywood" by Billy Joel, and a specific set of lines from this song truly resonate with him. "So many faces in and out of my life. Some will last, some will be just now, and then life is a series of hellos and goodbyes. I'm afraid it's time for goodbye again." He found those lyrics powerful in both scouting and his high school experience, but will never forget everything he has learned, and now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City County Council recognizes the hard work, dedication, and achievements of Conrad Burston. The City County Council wishes Conrad continued success in all future endeavors. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3414. And with that, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, and I would like to ask Conrad to say a few words here. I think he has something he would like to say with us, but just think about all the accomplishments this young man has done, and really think his goal in life is to be a teacher, which, being a former teacher, I think that is truly awesome, but, so, I wish him all the luck in that. Conrad?
Thank you very much, Councilwoman McHenry, for inviting me to this council meeting as your honored guest. The road to Eagle was not easy, but nothing of that magnitude as ever is. I recall a very famous line from President John F. Kennedy that sums up my time in scouts quite well. "I did it not because it was easy, but because it was hard." Thank you again.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 156, introduced by counselors Osalee, Lewis, and Kreider.
A special resolution supporting a sister-city relationship between Onisha, Nigeria, and Indianapolis, Indiana, and extending an invitation to the Obi of Onisha, for his city to join with the mayor of the city of Indianapolis in this cooperative relationship. Whereas the People-to-People Program initiated by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956, and endorsed by President John F. Kennedy in 1961, is designed to bring the people of the world closer together in the interest of peace. And?
Whereas the Sister Cities Program sanctioned by Sister Cities International develops municipal partnerships between U.S. cities and similar jurisdictions and other nations in order to provide opportunities for citizens and city officials to experience and explore other cultures through long-term partnerships. And?
Whereas, a local committee has been established, including members of the Indianapolis City County Council, and citizens of Indianapolis, as well as other affiliated with the city of Onisha, in order to explore the desire, desirability and the benefit of sister-city relationship in Onisha, Nigeria. And, whereas, Onisha in Nigeria, Anambra State, is a metropolitan city of over 1 million citizens located in the eastern banks of Nigeria River, and as the largest commercial market in Nigeria, it is known for the river, port, and economic hub for commercial commerce, industry, and education. Whereas the city of Indianapolis, Onisha, share the significant common ability as crossroads of the city and the major highways running through the adjacent to them, and as a riverfront city, the citizens of both cities recognize and respect the value of foreign strong bond for the purpose of social, intelligent, and culture enrichment. And whereas...
Whereas corporation efforts of local affiliates in both Onisha and Indianapolis have identified areas of mutual interest, such as education, infrastructure development, and technological advancement, that can be explored through a formal relationship between the two cities. And whereas...
Cities and government officials of Onisha welcome the commitment to a sister-city relationship and the exchange of mutual interests. Therefore, be it resolved by the city of Indianapolis. Section 1, the city, Indianapolis City County Council recognizes the established friendship between mutual interests of the cities of Onisha, Nigeria, and Indianapolis, Indiana. Section 2...
Through this resolution, the council extends a formal invitation to the Obi of Onisha, to join with the city of Indianapolis as sister cities, thus strengthening international amity by constructing mutually beneficial programs of exchange between their citizens. Section 3, the mayor has been invited to join in this resolution by fixing his signature heretofu, which he has done, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3414. And this special resolution was sponsored by counselors Osalee, Lewis, Kreider, and others, and, if passed by this motion, by the City County Council this 5th day of June 2017. Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, the purpose of the Sister Cities International is to encourage friendship and acceptance of other peoples in the belief that engagement between the peoples of geographically distant communities helps deter the misunderstandings that can lead to conflict and create bonds of trust and understanding through cultural and trade exchanges. The city of Onisha, Nigeria, will be Indianapolis's first sister-city agreement with a city on the continent of Africa. Onisha, with a metropolitan population of approximately 1 million people, sits at the crossroads of major roadway and shipping routes, and has the largest commercial market in Nigeria and one of the largest in West Africa. Nigeria has the largest population in Africa and has its second-largest economy. In addition to its economy, its art, its various cultures and ethnicities provide a rich and multifaceted partner for engagement and exchange. NIDO, which is the Nigerians in a diaspora organization, a 501(c)(3), is a local organization which has coordinated its efforts with the mayor's Office of International and Latino Affairs to develop this relationship. And NIDO's, NIDO Indiana's president, Mr. Andrew Itsede, is present this evening. Mr. Itsede.
Madam President, City Council members, on behalf of NIDO, the city of Onisha, Anambra, Nigeria, I want to say, thank you for passing this resolution. This is a great privilege for Nigeria as a whole, and we hope that this relationship, we have a mutual beneficial stance for both cities. Thank you so much.
This is for you?
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 107. Refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under special resolution, Madam Chair, with consent, I would like to take proposal 107, 108, 2017, together.
Consent?
Consent. Proposal 107, 108, approved appointment of Marion Fay Godwin and Kyle Johnson to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Board. Ms. Goodwin, Godwin, and Ms. Johnson both appeared before the committee, shared their qualifications, answered questions, both passed out of committee by a vote 8-0. Madam Chair, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries 21 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 110, refer to Metro and Economic Development Committee Chairman Osalee.
Thank you, Madam President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 110, 111, 112, and 113 together.
Please continue.
Thank you. Proposal number 110 appoints Ben Brown to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Perry Township Comprehensive Plan. Counselor Adamson moves, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to send proposal 110 to the full council with the due pass recommendation and the motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Proposal 111 appoints Mark Bryson to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Lawrence Township Comprehensive Plan, and Counselor Adamson moved, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to send proposal number 111 to the full council with the due pass recommendation and the motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Proposal number 112 appoints Mary Clark to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Pike Township Comprehensive Plan. Counselor Robinson moved and seconded by Counselor Miller to send proposal number 112 to the full council with the due pass recommendation and the motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Proposal 113 appoint Sarah Wiley to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Franklin Township Comprehensive Plan. Counselor Adamson moved, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to send proposal number 113 to the full council with the due pass recommendation and the motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? Counselor Mallory?
I'd like to, thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull out 113, go on separately.
Okay. So just for your information, the next time, if you can catch them before we say consent, it makes it a little bit easier on the clerk. Mr. Chairman, did you hear that? We're going to pull out...
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
So, comments on the first three proposals? Madam Clerk, did you get that? Thank you, Mel. Comments? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. Yes, sir. And we'll take proposal 113 separate. The proposals carry 20 to 2. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 113. Do you just want to give us one more brief explanation?
Sure. I'll give you a little bit more information on this then. Proposal 113 appoints Sarah Wiley to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Franklin Township Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Wiley stated that she's a teacher at Beach Grove Middle School, feels that her kids deserve the best city in which to grow, live, and have a career. If they do not have economic development, then they do not have that. Once again, Counselor Adamson moves, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to send proposal 113 to the full council with the due pass recommendation, and it carried unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? CNN proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries 17 to 5. The next item on our agenda is introductions of proposals. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal numbers 131 through 137, I'll refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 131... and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number 131, introduced by Councilors Osley and Lewis, appoints Judith Essex to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Center Township Comprehensive Plan. Proposal Number 132, introduced by Councilors Lewis and Evans, appoints Ryan Heathco to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Wayne Township Comprehensive Plan. Proposal Number 133, introduced by Counselor Osley, amends the code to authorize the county recorder to charge a flat fee of $10 for each document the Marion County Recorder records. Proposal Number 134, introduced by Counselor Osley, appropriates an additional $250,000 in the 2017 budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development Housing Trust Fund to provide additional services and housing to Marion County's homeless, excuse me, at-risk population. Proposal Number 135, introduced by Counselor Osley, approves a declaratory resolution in economic development plan of the Metropolitan Development Commission, creating the Ardmore Economic Development Area. Proposal Number 144, introduced by Counselor Osley, excuse me. Proposal Number 136, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,200,000 to GP Dalen LLC for the acquisition, design, construction, renovation, installation, improvement, and equipping of a thirty-eight-unit mixed-use apartment building, including urban street-front retail, a multi-story parking garage, and streetscape and landscape projects located at the southwest corner of the intersection of New York and Delaware Streets in the Ardmore Economic Allocation Area in District 11. Proposal Number 137, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $8,020,000 to Indy Canal Lodging Associates LLC and Sun Development and Management Corporation for the financing, acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping of a parking facility, adjacent hotels, and retail space, and preservation of the historic Bethel AME Church located at 414 West Vermont Street in the northwest redevelopment area in District 11. Proposal Number 138, introduced by Councilors Robinson, Scales, and McQuillan, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Paula Finch to the Juvenile Detention Center Advisory Board. Proposal Number 139 through 171, I'll refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal Number 139, introduced by Counselor Fanning, approves the purchase of certain real estate by the Department of Public Works for the construction of the Indianapolis River Park East Edition Stormwater Improvements Project, which property is owned by Colonial Hills Baptist Church Incorporated. Proposal Number 140, introduced by Counselor Miskary, authorizes intersection controls at Beecher Street and Orland Street in District 21. Proposal Number 141, introduced by Counselor Holliday, authorizes parking restrictions on Kellum Drive from Mills Road to Raritan Drive in District 20. Proposal Number 142, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Arden Drive and Arden North Drive in District 2. Proposal Number 143, introduced by Counselor Oliver, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Delaware Street and Thirty-second Street in District 9. Proposal Number 144, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes parking restrictions along the inner curbs of Monument Circle in District 11. Proposal Number 145, introduced by Counselor Cordy, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Brandonburg Boulevard and State's Bend Drive in District 18. Proposal Number 146, introduced by Counselor Miller, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Grove Avenue and Lexington Avenue in District 16. Proposal Number 147, introduced by Counselor Miller, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Stevens Street and Greer Street in District 16. Proposal Number 148, introduced by Counselor Robinson, authorizes intersection controls throughout the Holliday subdivision in District 1. Proposal Number 149, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes parking restrictions on Cornell Avenue in District 2. Proposal Number 150, introduced by Counselor Lewis, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Allison Avenue and Thirty-sixth Street in District 10. Proposal Number 151, introduced by Counselor Simpson, authorizes parking restrictions on Park Avenue near Forty-second Street in District 7. Proposal 171, introduced by Counselor Adamson, approves the mayor's appointment of Daniel J. Parker as the director of the Department of Public Works. Madam President, this concludes the introduction of proposals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposals Number 157 through 169 are rezoning proposals certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on May 24, 2017. If no counselors wishes to call down any of those proposals for reconsideration, they will pass them to law. Does anyone wish to call down any of those proposals for reconsideration? CNN, they will pass them to law. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 170. It's a rezoning ordinance certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on May 24, 2017. If no counselor wishes to call down that proposal for reconsideration, the denial will stand. Does anyone wish to call down Proposal Number 170? CNN, the denial will stand. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. There is no business there. There is no business under special order. Unfinished business will proceed as special orders final adoption. Proposal Number 109, refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proposal 109 amend the code to provide that the chairman of the Audit Committee serve a three-year term. General Counsel B. Secre explained that when the ordinance that governed the Audit Committee was revised last year, there was some ambiguity regarding the term limit of appointee named as a chair by the mayor. As that, particularly appointment, now requires counsel confirmation, this proposal cleaned up the language to make it clear that the chair also serve a three-year term like other mayoral appointees, and the proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight zero. Madam Chair, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. Counselors? The proposal carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 114, refer to Metro and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Osley.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe that we have an amendment here that needs to be read. Very good. No problem. All right. Proposal Number 114 enhances the city's landlord registration program to include units, advertises rentals, and units offered for sale as rent-to-own via sales contract. Counselor Miller stated that what is being suggested is an update to the definition of what renting a unit really means. He stated that the following in Section 851-104, whether occupied or offered or advised or advertised for rental or rental units offered with an option for sale through seller-financed agreements without recorded title transfer, that if they are advertising but do not have a tenant, they are still renting. And if they are one of the rent-to-own situations, the person still does not have their name on the title, that also is considered a rental. Counselor Fanning stated that she wants to make sure that they distinguish the difference between rent-to-own agreements and land contract sales, and Counselor Kreider echoed Counselor Fanning's concern. Counselor Adamson stated that he feels the same. Until one has a title to the property, they are still renting. Counselor Kreider moves, seconded by Counselor Fanning, to amend Proposal Number 114, and the motion carried by a vote of six to zero, by inserting "with an option" between the words "offered" and "for sale" in Section 851-104, and deleting the word "sale by contract" in the same section. And Counselor Adamson moves, seconded by Counselor Kreider, to amend Proposal 114, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero, by inserting telephone number between the words "name" and "address." Counselor Adamson moved, seconded by Counselor Miller, to send Proposal 114 as amended to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation, and the motion carried unanimously by a vote of five to zero. Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN, proceed to the board for our vote. They're not going to do the amendment. The proposal carries nineteen to three. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 116, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Proposal 116, 2017 approves a transfer of $80,026 in the 2017 budget of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency to properly record 2017 Department of Corrections grant expenditures. Julie King, CFO of the Marion County Community Corrections, stated that the transfer will have no effect on the fund balance. Rather, the proposal is a technical correction in the allocation of the funding. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send Proposal Number 116 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Madam President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? CNN will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries twenty-two to zero. There is no business under special service district counselors. The next item on our agenda is new business. CNN, proceed to announcement and adjournments. The documented agenda for this meeting of the council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Madam President.
The chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan. Oh, I'm sorry. Who has something?
Ma'am.
Henry.
Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make an announcement that the West Side Chamber of Commerce is going to be having a job there on June 14, Flag Day, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Pike Freshman Center on Zionsville Road and Seventy-first Street. We have over seventy employers that have to have at least a minimum of ten jobs that they are looking for. So if you are looking for a job, if you're looking for a better job, job advancement, please come out to Pike Freshman Center on June 14 between 11:00 and 2:00, and bring your resume and dress for an interview.
Thank you, Counselors. Sorry about that. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment: by Counselors Lewis, Adamson, Westler, Feaster, Clay, and Johnson in memory of Lilian White-Forestall; by Counselor Adamson in memory of James Legrand; by Counselor Westler in memory of Thomas M. Given; by Counselor Johnson in memory of Harland Buddy Tyner; and Martha Marty Jean Book Powell; by Counselor Lewis in memory of Robin Renee Jackson; by Counselor Feaster in memory of Barry Green; by Counselor Osley in memory of Thelma Riggins. Madam President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request the motion be made a part of the permanent records of this body, and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Here are no objections. The motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Here are no further motions. We are adjourned.